Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
I'd like to open this meeting of the Exeter Planning Board of December 28th, 2023, which happens to be our last meeting of this year. And begin by introducing the board. I'm Langdon Plummer. I'm Chair of the Board. And to my left is...
John Gruder.
Nancy Delanger, Select Board Representative.
And to my right is...
Jennifer Martel.
And we have four members, which is a quorum. The first item on our agenda are the November members, excuse me, minutes of November 16th and December 7th. Now, we have two of our close minute readers not in attendance this evening, so I would entertain a motion to Table East till the next...
Good idea.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor, please, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions, none, so that motion carries. Because there are no public hearings scheduled this evening, we're going to construct a committee and begin with an administrative work session to discuss proposed zoning amendments being considered for the 2024 Town Warrant. And with that, we have our Town Planner, Dave Sharple's present, who will provide to us with the information and lead the discussion. Thank you. Dave?
Thank you, Chairman, Board Members. And I won't keep you, I know it's a vacation week, lot going on, so I won't keep you along, but I thank you for coming, because I did want to just give you these changes, talk about the reasoning, the overall reasoning behind them, just give a broad brush of the two amendments that we're proposing this year. And then you have these handouts, and you can, you know, absorb them. And if the board is supportive of holding up public hearings on these, the public hearing, first public hearing will be January 11th. And that's when we'd get into detail of what each one of these is. You know, like each, you know, kind of go line by line. There's not a lot here. But as you may remember, we kind of embarked on a larger, looking at a larger scale. I asked the board in the beginning, you know, do you want to grow, do you don't want to grow, you know, how do you want to grow if you want to grow? It seemed like the consensus was, yes, we, you know, we do want to continue to grow. We want to continue to, you know, create, you know, housing opportunities, commercial business opportunities in Exeter. So, okay, so how do we want to grow? We really want to grow ideally, in my opinion, in a fiscally responsible manner. Land use that kind of pays for itself in taxes, that doesn't ideally draw a deficit and have to be subsidized from other parts of town. In an environmentally sound way, the least impact on the natural environment. We, we looked at a couple, we had several land use series where, one, we looked at the benefits of undeveloped land. We learned all the benefits of undeveloped land, and it supplies everything kind of we need to, to go about our daily lives. But then, we also looked at the benefits of developed land, which provides all the other things that we need to provide our, you know, provide with our daily lives, and the clothes we wear, the cars we drive, and so forth. So, you have to have a good balance. And also, like, the third leg, and it's kind of sustainability for financial, environmental, and social, where you provide opportunities for gathering space and so forth. So, we, when we first looked at, here's the zoning map of Exeter here. And what we first did was, we looked at possibly...
This is Pete.
Hey, this is Pete. Welcome, Pete. Can you hear us okay? You can give a thumbs up, because we don't have audio. All right, no thumbs up. But, anyway, here's the, here's the zoning of current zoning of Exeter. And we were looking at, was looking at kind of steering development, incentivizing development where infrastructure exists to support it. So, where the transportation networks support it, where our water, where our sewer supports So, you maximize the benefits of developed land while minimizing the detriment to undeveloped land. So, we figured, we looked at the town of Exeter, and you look, you know, it's got the urban core here, then it has some linear corridors, your state routes that have development along it, mixed commercial and residential and so forth, and then kind of offshoots, as you get out of town, offshoots, you have your cul-de-sacs and your residential single-family home developments off of them, Fox Court, and, you know, the smaller, smaller lot areas like JD Hill and so forth. Then you have your larger lot zoning out, out by Pickpocket with, you know, Blackford Estates, and, and out north of 101 with Captain's Way, and, and Watson Road and Forest Ridge and so forth, where you have your, you know, larger lot, single-family zoning. So, we said, okay, we want to grow, ideally absorb it in areas where infrastructure exists to support it. So, then we don't have to build new roads, we don't have to build new bridges, we don't have to build new drainage infrastructure. That all costs money to build, well, a lot of times, the developer builds it, but then the town takes it over, and it's a long-term maintenance responsibility.
Yeah.
So, you, you do get taxes from, you know, you get revenue, you get taxes from the new development. But if you get taxes from new development without adding any infrastructure, that's much more fiscally attractive than adding development and taking on long-term maintenance responsibilities. And some of these assets can be very expensive, as we know, pump stations and so forth. They get, they get very expensive to, to fix and maintain, to maintain and to repair and/or even replace at the end of their useful life. So, we looked at the townwide zoning, but it was kind of based on, it was based on kind of downzoning the outer areas. What I mean by downzoning is, you downzone, as you limit through zoning, you limit the development potential of those areas. And then you upzone areas where you want it to, like you increase the density, you increase the height, and you allow development to occur in those places. There didn't seem much of an appetite for the planning board to downzone. And we do have two-acre zoning and three-acre zoning under the Aquafool Protection Districts out in these areas anyway. So, there wasn't really a big appetite to downzone. The other way you could do it is like a transfer of development rights, or called TDRs, where you take development rights of one area of town, called the sending zone, and then you have a receiving zone. So, you take development rights, and you actually, people can purchase the development rights from these, from the sending zone properties, and actually use them in the receiving zone. Dover does that, it's pretty successful, they, they do have a TDR program, but my opinion is Exeter doesn't have a ton of land, not, not even close compared to Dover. They have a much bigger downtown, they have a lot of development opportunities that Exeter just doesn't have. So, there's a lot more market, if you will, for those transferred development rights. So, in Exeter, I was like thinking, okay, instead of saying ascending and receiving zone, we'll just identify the receiving zones, in theory, without calling them receiving zones, and then incentivize the development of the types of development that we want, and allow...
The sending zone, does that then become, yeah, nothing goes there now, conservation land?
Well, it can, it doesn't mean nothing goes there. It doesn't mean you can't build it, it means someone can buy the rights to it. So, so say, say like someone owns 50 acres in the sending zone, and under conventional zoning, they could get, say, 20 lots, two-acre zone, right? They get 20 units. Well, you can, some developers looking in a downtown project, and by the current zoning for downtown, he can get, say, 30 units. But he can really fit 50 there. So, he wants another, he could get another 20 units, but instead of going to the ZBA to get a variance, zoning board adjustment, get a variance to get the other density, he can go and approach that owner of the 50-lot parcel in the sending zone and purchase those 20 units. And if those units are purchased, that means nothing can go there on that 50 acres. Then it becomes, you know, a deed on the property, you can't develop it. But if, that doesn't mean that the owner of that 50-acre parcel say, I don't want to sell my units to, I can, I'll just develop it under the zoning. So...
That was getting at, so...
Yeah, it can, and it, you know, it doesn't stop development from happening in those areas, but it just...
Well, if you don't sell, if you don't sell those, that number of houses?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
It's like air rights in a big city, right?
Similar.
I can build another 20 stories, but I buy the air rights from the guy next door, and he can never build that any higher.
Correct, if you buy the air rights and you own it.
So, is similar to that?
Similar to that, but we're not proposing that at this point, you know? So, what, what I looked at was like, okay, when we, we've been talking a lot about the townwide, and we haven't been able to, the planning board is pretty busy, you folks are pretty busy, you got, you meet twice a month, you get a lot of applications, they just keep coming. We hadn't been able to dive in the whole thing. So, I said, okay, and, not just that, it was more of a, I thought an intermittent step or an intermediate step would be more appropriate for this year. And it's nothing you haven't seen, is, you know, the MUND, the Mixed Use Neighborhood Development that you folks supported and, and the town adopted for the C1 and the WC. So, right now, these are really small districts. This little C1 right here, which is downtown, the WC, which is just a linear district from, you know, the library to the, to Stewart's Park, right downtown, across the street on Water Street, and a little section of Portsmouth Ave, this, this little section from the Lights to Walgreens right here, this section of Portsmouth Ave. So, really, and, and the Lincoln Street area, very small area. So, there wasn't, there's not a lot of development potential, we've had some interest from a couple of, you know, on a couple of projects, but nothing has gotten built just yet in that zone. So, I was thinking, one of the two things, one of the zoning amendments that I'd like to propose is expanding the MUND, the same, same ideas of MUND out onto the C2 district, which is Portsmouth Ave. So, it goes, the first part is C1 from Portsmouth Ave to Walgreens. But that's pretty developed, you know, there's not a ton of opportunity, there's not a ton of opportunity in the rest of C2, but there are some parcels that are possibly redeveloped. Expand the MUND all the way on Portsmouth Ave. And then there's another C2 district that's right here on Epping Road. It's basically from where Brookside Drive is, out to like where the meeting place and, you know, before Front Row Pizza. Front Row Pizza, I believe, is in the, is in the C3. Or, so, wait a minute, I think, is that C3? No, 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 that's the end of it. Front Row Pizza's the end of C2. So, from Front Row Pizza, basically, to the meeting place, you know, the way the bank is, that, that's going in right now, and then on the other side, Great Bay Kids and so forth. So, that section, section Epping Road make that C2. So, expand the MUND there, and what the MUND does is it, you can develop under existing regulations, what the existing underlying zoning is, or you can choose to go into the MUND. And the MUND requires, well, removes the density. You, you don't have to have density, relaxes the parking requirements for, for, for commercial and residential, a little bit, but keeps it enough, you know, and, and then the market can dictate that, if they'll, they can fit more parking, they, they probably will. But reduces that and allows, but allows for a more denser development, but a percentage of them, 10%, have to be affordable units. So, instead of like, okay, I could build eight by right, oh, if I go under the MUND, I could fit 12 or 15, but then two of them have to be affordable, you know, under that. So, you know, 1.5, if it's 15, two, two of them have to be affordable. So, we give them an incentive to build more, but, because they need to, you need to incentivize it if you want affordable units, because no one's just going to build them and, and charge, and not charge market rate, because they're going to take a hit on it. So, the numbers, if the numbers work better for market rate, they're just going to, for less units for market rate, then they're going to just build market rate. So, there has to be some incentive, so you got to give them more market rate units to offset the affordable units, from a pro forma standpoint. So, that's what we're looking to do, that's one of them.
Dave, can I ask you a question about that? So, currently, though, in the commercial C2 and C3, you would need to go, you need to get relief to do any residential, right? So, with the MUND, basically?
Yeah, it's allowed, well, you can have mixed use in the C2.
Oh, you can, okay.
You can. There was a proposal that was proposed, I don't know if you remember it, but remember the bank right next to the Volvo, it became the Volvo Parking Lot, the overflow parking? John Salina, older gentleman, nice guy, he, he proposed a bank with four residential units above it.
Oh, okay.
And it got approved, but it didn't get built, and the next Volvo bought it and expanded it to a parking lot. So, you could do mixed use before, it's just, it's just the numbers didn't work, the density doesn't work. You know, the, it was, it was, you know, you really want to allow, you know, multifamily, you know, they have to have enough units, you know, four units in a bank probably didn't, didn't make the numbers work.
Okay.
So...
But then C3, is that the one where you can't?
C3, you cannot. C3 is the only district in Exeter where we don't allow multifamily or residential.
And you're proposing the MUND go into the...
C2.
Expand into the C2, not the C3, okay.
Not the C3. I mean, we have, in Exeter, we got about, I don't know, it's less than 10% of the land area, I mean, it's, I think it's like 96% or something like that of the land area is available for residential in Exeter. Only like 4% of the landmass is available for strictly commercial. So, if you, if you include the C3 for residential, then you're basically saying 100% anywhere in Exeter's, whether that's something that the plant board wants to do, we'll have that discussion. It's just generally, sometimes you, you save some land for commercial, exclusive to commercial, because there's some businesses that people don't really want to live near, you know, businesses that make noise, that, you know, create smoke, that have, you know, steam valve releases and so forth. So, generally are compatible with residential uses, and if residential uses go there, you get kind of complaints and so forth about these uses. Is that okay, the, you know, do you want to discuss the C3, or?
No, I was just curious, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on what, what was allowed in each one. I know we went over it before, but that was a while ago.
Yeah, C3 was the, the only one. So, what we're going to do, so, any more questions on that one? I don't know. We're going to get into detail on this, we're going to go by, like, go through it line by line. You can see the handout I gave you, the red is new language.
Yes, okay.
So, there's a little bit that's changed, not, not a heck of a lot, but we'll go through that at the first public hearing. So, if there's people here, we'll go through it detailed, line by line, explain what it all means, and present it to you in detail, and then have, you know, some comment there. Wasn't the purpose for tonight, I just kind of wanted to give you the, the brief overview. And then the second thing is, we, the Housing Advisory Committee has been looking at, I've been looking at the residential conversions. In our Schedule I notes, we allow, right now, in Exeter, we allow residential conversions of any residential lot that meets certain requirements can convert their single-family home in up to four dwelling units. So, every single family, that if you have a lot that meets the minimum lot requirements of, of the zone, you can, or even less, on a conversion, you can create up to four units, you can create a fourplex, anywhere in town. And, and then the accessory dwelling unit allowed you to put one unit in. And when I looked at them, the conversions, ADUs were stricter to put one unit in than a residential conversion. So, people that didn't meet the ADU would just call it a conversion, and that didn't make sense to me. Why should a conversion, when you're converting up to four units, be less strict than creating one unit? It didn't make a lot of sense. So, I brought that to the Housing Advisory Committee, we decided to look at both of these, the conversions and ADUs, and, and revise them accordingly. And we had a couple, what, we had a couple of sessions, and the last time we met, a couple weeks ago, we went through it line by line and, and modified it, and then this is the result of the changes that we discussed.
Okay.
They will meet again, they are meeting again, because they wanted to meet to, they haven't got this, I just sent them this today, because I hadn't, we talked about it, I wrote it all down, we knew what we were going to do, but they hadn't seen it, you know, in a redline version. So, I got that to them today, we're meeting January 5th, next Friday, so we're going to go over these changes, and then on the public hearing on January 11th, we'll have their feedback on, on this, on this proposal. But this is from them. Well, the biggest thing we did was, didn't feel that residential conversions carving anywhere where you're outside the sewer district probably is not a good idea to convert a single-family home to four residential units. Because it definitely does, with the nitrogen and the general permit on nitrogen coming up, and the, and our administrative order for nitrogen in Slumska and so forth, where, you know, the writings on the wall were being continually regulated on nitrogen. So, our septic tying into the municipal system definitely reduces the nitrogen, nutrient loading of nitrogen into our water systems and our, you know, our water resources. So, because we can clean it, we can do a pretty good job of cleaning, getting the, removing the nitrogen. Where septic systems, in general, do not do as good a job, there are some advanced septic systems now that are getting much better at that, and technology's come a long way, so it is nice, but we weren't ready to say, okay, don't connect to the municipal sewer system, and we could require these advanced septic systems, because there's a lot of designs out there, it's really new technology, so we don't really know what we would spec out for that. So, in the interim, we're saying conversions need to be tied in, three or four units need to be tied into the municipal sewer system. Water needs to be available, that's what I write, I don't, municipal water shall be available immediately adjacent and accessible to the property. This provision does not require connection to the municipal water system, it only requires it's available in the event it's ever needed. That's a safety valve, because the more units you put, and then they drill a well, which they have every right to do, and they, they get their own water, but God forbid something happens, PFAS, you know, something, something, some spill occurs, and their wells get contaminated, you know, town water should be available. So, we're not saying you have to hook up to do a conversion, it just has to be accessible to the property. Because I think it's a good idea when you add density like that, if you turn a single-family home into four, now you're dealing with four units that have to have potable water if something happens. So, we're looking, that's what we did for conversions, and then ADUs, we just kind of, it was funny, because ADUs had required parking for four vehicles, which is stricter than our parking schedule. So, an accessory dwelling unit required, required more parking spaces, if you called it a... If you called it a conversion, it says the number of off street parking shall comply with Article five six off street parking, which if it was a one bedroom unit, it would only require one parking spot. Whereas our ADUs required four, I'm assuming two for the main residence and two for the ADU. But still, it's more than what would be required in the in the parking. So we we just, we cleaned it up. We made it, I think, a little bit more, a little better. One of the things that the state is recommending is saying get rid of ownership owner occupied requirements, because they say it's a detriment. We discussed that. We did not change that in either one. Because when there's an owner on site, the committee felt that there's more pride, there's more taking care of the property. You know, you don't want to get a situation where somebody just buys a single family home, carves it up into four apartments and lives somewhere else and just rents it out, you know? And and those, you know, they can be, you know? So that's what the board, the committee didn't feel like they wanted to go to say, to relieve that condition, you know, that to pull that requirement that they don't have to be owner occupied. They they kept it that one unit needs to be owner occupied for those reasons. So those are the two. And I was hopefully just kind of present them to you and I get any questions and get your support. Because I did have to already schedule the first public hearing because the paper deadline moved back now. So the in order to get it in the 10 days that you need to, it's like two and a half weeks now before before the meeting. So we already had to post it. So we did post it, but I wanted to make sure it was okay with the board consensus to have a public hearing. Having a public hearing doesn't mean you're gonna adopt it, doesn't mean you're, you know, you're gonna move forward, doesn't mean you're gonna recommend it to the warrant. But you just have to do the public, two public hearings if you want. Well, I'd suggest two public hearings, one on January 11th, one on the 25th. And then you can decide whether to move it forward to the to the warrant or not. Because it needs to be, I need to get the warrant article, I think, by January 29th. If if we're gonna move forward. So that would, that schedule would work. So without objection, I'll have those public hearings. We'll have Nate Kelly from Horsley Witten here as well, who wrote the MUND. He'll be in attendance on January 11th. We'll go over the, we'll start the presentation, go over all the changes and then, you know, open it up to questions.
Do you have a question? I have a couple of questions. So just it's a specific question, I, we can cover this next week. But I'm just curious why the ADU, you're not doing the same requirements on the municipal sewer system, municipal water as you are?
Because it was only one unit.
Yeah, but it could be a four bedroom unit, right? I mean, couldn't it?
Well, it, well, it can be, it needs to be for accessory dwellings within the principal the trucks shall be limited to less than half of the finished floor area. So if there's an eight bedroom house.
Yeah.
Well, and then which one's the ADU? I mean, you're right, it could be. That's generally probably not gonna happen. But they do have to prove if they do have it, they do have to prove that they they have the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so because like prior to any renovations, the owner shall prove evidence to the town building inspector that septic facilities are adequate for both units according to the standards of the town. Such evidence shall be in the form of certification by a state New Hampshire licensed septic system designer and so forth. So, I mean, we could have went either way, but I don't know. It's it's an ADU, you know, you got two, three acre, four acre, five acre lots out in the, you know, non sewered areas. Didn't necessarily see an issue with having one additional unit. And, you know, getting three or four, that's when we're like, okay. Three and four units, you gotta connect. That was just our thinking. I mean, you know.
No, I think it makes sense. I was just curious, yeah. It might it might come up.
Is an accessory dwelling a separate structure from the main structure?
It can be.
Can be.
They can, they can, conversions or ADUs can be in, if it can be in an accessory structure like above a garage. Or it can be a barn that's converted to an accessory dwelling unit. It still has limitation, does all the same limitations on it that is in the house, but it can be an accessory structure. Or in theory, you could even build it accessories, you know? You could build an accessory structure.
What was the 10 year requirement that came up?
Well, there was one, there was a thing in the residential, the conversions that the home, the structure has been a residence for a minimum of 10 years. The hack, the Housing Advisory Committee recommended striking that.
Yeah, thank you. I couldn't remember. I just remembered 10 years.
We weren't really sure where the 10 years came from. I mean, maybe like, okay, you can't just go ahead and build a place with four units. But it's a conversion. You have to convert an existing, so the building has to exist. To do a conversion, because you're, the conversion of existing residential buildings, you know, provided that, you know, into not more than four units provided that. So the building has to exist. Well, if someone wants to build a brand new building as a single family home and then immediately go to a conversion, then I guess, okay. So, you know, I I did, we didn't really understand why it had to be existence for 10 years. Because someone's not gonna build it new as a single family dwelling, then go in.
Spend all that money.
And rip all the walls out and redo it for a conversion.
But the second buyer might do it on the fourth year.
Yeah, exactly. But what does that matter? I guess that's what we were wondering, like, what does it matter if it's year four or year 10 or year 20? I mean, if we're gonna allow it, we allow it. So if it happens, wants to happen in eight years from the structure being built to 30 years from the structure being built, we didn't really necessarily see the point in that. You had another question, Jen?
I did, yeah. This is kind of a broader question. So could you just kind of talk quickly about, so last year, there was a proposal to change the zoning that actually just reduced the number of districts altogether. And I thought that, I thought we were gonna be like, kind of headed back to that but in a way that we understood why that was happening. And this seems like very different than that.
No, it's, I think it is very different, but it's compatible with that. What we were looking to do as part of that was doing basically the MUND in the Portsmouth Ave and Epping Road C two corridors. So I think we could build on it. Because I just didn't think like, when I look at it, we meet, the planning board meets like 20 times a year. And a couple of those are dedicated to CIP and 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 so forth. So so you got like maybe 18. If you spent two hours on like zoning every meeting, that would only be less than a one, one week work week for most people. It's like 36 hours. We just don't have a lot of time. So I was, I guess I was sensitive to that. Like, we, we just didn't fit it in to go into the level of detail I thought the board needed to do something. So I'm like, okay, I think we can do this as a step and then continue on that path and still do what we were planning on doing. But I didn't want to just go another year. I would really like to get those, the MUND, you know, on to C two to see if we can get a couple of projects. And then if people see them and like that kind of project, then we have something like, say, that, that's an example. And then maybe people will want that in other places that would help the zoning, you know, the townwide zoning expansion.
Yeah, no, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I just didn't think, we, we don't have enough time. I mean, not, not that we don't have enough time. We have time, but it takes time because it's like, you know, months, we only spend an hour a month, you know, on on this. So that's 12 hours in a year. That's not a lot. I mean, I spend, I spend, yeah, I spend, you know, 150 hours, you know, on this stuff.
I think it's easier for the public to deal with in a smaller piece than. Do you have a list of priorities? So next year, you'll have your second wish list item?
Yeah, and I, you know, honestly, because we've been having, one thing we've been doing is we've been meeting periodically, quite a bit actually, as staff. Krista Murphy, Doug Eastman, Bob McAvoy and myself have been meeting and going over the proposal like line by line and going over all the uses and going, you know, collectively. And we had a lot of thoughts on either way and so forth. So and we're talking about different ways to do it and easier ways for the public to understand it. And, you know, do the same thing in a different, less intrusive way. So that's kind of, it's it's evolving. So do I have exact, I don't have that exactly what it is next year, but it's evolving as we continue to work as a team and collaborate and come up with something that we think, you know, kind of targets. And, you know, we've been talking a lot, not about zoning, but about piloting things. Like if you're making a change, a major change to a traffic pattern. You know, some places are doing it like they build it not cheaply. It costs a little bit of money. They do it nice, but they they temporarily do it. They do it so like, this is what it's gonna be. So you use it for a while, use it for four to six months. And then you can understand, because if you, you know, and you say you put $50,000 instead of a million and a half dollars and you can't change it if you don't like it. You know, do like a pilot program. So that's kind of what we're, we're saying, okay, let's get this MUND out onto the Portsmouth Ave. Let's see a couple of, you know, hopefully a development or two takes advantage of it. And you can kind of see what the development's gonna look like and what it provides. And then if people like it. We can keep building on that.
Sure.
Portsmouth Avenue especially has some great potential.
Yeah, and everything exists. We got plenty of right of way out there, got plenty, you know, got traffic lights, get sidewalks on both sides, water sewer. That is gonna be an issue, though. The water and sewer is a challenge out there. We are building, the sewer is, there's a pinch point on Larry Court. The Webster pump station's not done and the siphon's not done, but those are under construction. Those are being done. So that should relieve some of the capacity on on for sewer on Portsmouth Ave. We'll still have that pinch point on Larry Court for for anything north of that. But and then waters, we gotta figure out water. We're doing analysis on that townwide as we speak to figure out kind of what our capacities are. So but those, even if you zone so you exceed the capacities of what you have, you you do that on a case by case basis at the plant. That's a legit thing that we do at the technical, do we have, you know, you're proposing X amount of units, do we have the sewer capability? Can we handle it at our sewer treatment plant? Can we treat the additional waste that's coming toward the sites and the pipes that go from A to B? Actually handle it? And if they can't, they need to be upgraded or we can't do it. You know, we, we have to say no to that. So we haven't run into that yet, but that someday you might. But with groundwater and water, we are, you know, I know, I, the CIP has the groundwater development program where we're exploring new groundwater sources as we speak. We've been test drilling at a site that I've been aware of. And we're also in the CIP this year, the surface water treatment plant, some exploratory, you know, initial research on that. Because we are gonna need to do something with our, you know, upgrade our water resources at some, at some point. I mean, our sewer treatment plant, our surface water treatment plant is pretty aged, is aged. The one in the flood plain below the reservoir right now. I mean, half the, half the pumps, like Matt Barubi, before he left, was telling me a lot of the parts you can't get for the equipment that's in there that is sold. So they have to like fabricate the parts for it if they need something new. So that's that, you know, that gets expensive. So it's. It's getting aged, you know, but we'll keep it going and it's in the CIP. So Pete, can you hear us? You're looking at me. Can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear me?
Hello?
Hello? Can, do you need to, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I've been enjoying it.
Good. Yeah, thanks for your time on on this, you know, holiday week. So I guess everyone's supportive of.
Yeah.
Holding the public hearings.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Is there a lot of other, is there anything else in the agenda?
Yeah, I can actually be heard.
You can now.
Yes, you can be.
Sing.
Not that I'm aware of right now. No, actually, no. There's, and I don't even think there's something for the 25th either. We haven't seen anything. There is one for the TRC. Something's coming into the TRC, the 81 Front Street. The conversion there, the zoning board allowed them, I think, a six family, a single family home, like the biggest one in Exeter. It's like 16,000 square feet. It's at 81 Front Street. And they allowed it to be converted into six dwelling units. So there's not much, it's the existing house. But since it's it's multifamily, it triggers our our review. So and there's not, it's not gonna be any much heavy lifting, I don't believe. Because it's just, they're basically converting the existing space into six.
They're gonna have to add parking and stuff, I would think.
No, they have the parking. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a, it's quite the, it's quite the campus. Yeah, it's quite the campus. You can't see it from the road, because I didn't know. It was like, I, I, I was looking, I've seen it on GIS and I, I didn't really connect it. It was a single family home. And then I was doing a assessed value per acre and I looked it up and it's one of the highest valued single, and it was a single family loose. I zoomed in on it and it's just, it's just massive. It's massive.
How old is it?
That's a good question. I don't know.
Oh, I think it's 1800s anyway, but don't quote me. Yeah, it, I just. Is that in the historic district?
No.
It's right across from the end, though.
It's right at Seminary Lane, where the back way into Lincoln Street School.
I thought that was still, I thought the, I thought Lincoln Street was the ending point of the historic district.
Boy, you get to Lincoln Street.
Yeah.
I'll check, but I don't believe it is.
I think you did.
Yeah.
81 Front? I don't believe it goes out there. Hold on just a second.
I walked around back.
And then they have a lot, I think they own that, all the watered area out there, too.
Yeah, and there's a little, there's a garage behind it. I don't remember them talking about making apartments out of it. I don't think that came up. They wanted to tear down.
Well, this sounds like a good plan, I think. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would agree. Seems like a good time of year to do it, too, because.
You're right.
It's not busy.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, I thought that.
It is the, well, it is and it isn't. The first 200 feet is.
Oh, right, because it doesn't, oh, is the house.
It goes way back.
Oh, wow, okay.
And I don't think that they're proposing any.
Any exterior.
No. I mean, I've, not that I've seen, if they do, then they're gonna have to get, you know, their their necessary approvals if they haven't already. But I attend the HTC meetings now. I don't remember.
Something like the Bell House on on Pine Street. They made into three units, I believe. Brick house.
It's right next door to the funeral.
Did a conversion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we did one out on 15 Newfields, too. Did a four unit, remember the single family and the whatever that was, that accessory building?
Dry cleaning business?
Yes, the dry cleaning business, right, yes.
Is that being built?
Oh, it's built.
Yeah, that's built. So any other further questions?
Any other questions? I think there's, we certainly support, can move ahead with it.
Great. Look forward to presenting on the 11th. And did anyone ever get, did anyone get the chance to watch the presentation of the stand to change gears, Stand Tech, the downtown parking?
Haven't yet. I did.
You did?
Yeah. So you.
I just saw the plans, but I didn't get to.
There was some pretty interesting recommendations from them that I think are worth.
It was good.
Yeah. It's on Exeter TV. I think you can get it on demand on our website. You know, you could have watched it live the night of the forum, which was, I think, December 13th or something like that.
That's when I watched it.
Yeah, and but I'd encourage y'all to take a look at, at least take a look at the presentation. They make a couple of proposals to some intersections that I think are are definitely worth considering, like they're, they're very, you know, not new, but like, for example, out front here, they look at possibly bringing that stop sign on by Town Hall. You know, stop sign if you're coming from, you know, Swayze and you come up and you stop right there, Town Hall's on your right for pedestrians. And then you have to yield because traffic coming, you know, coming, going up Front Street doesn't stop. Taking that stop sign, moving it to the other side of the bandstand and possibly creating a four way on the east side of the bandstand.[1755.15] a four way on the east side of the bandstand.
I would love that.
So it's a four way, always stop.
Yeah, I like that.
And then creating green space
Green space.
between the Town Hall and the bandstand and connecting that as like a pedestrian plaza.
That one would be a good one to test with what you talked about before, making, spending a, you know, this money.
Do a temporary.
Do a temporary thing.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Some people might not get used to that, but a, a nice green space that would, between the bandstand and the Old Town Hall would be great.
Yeah, you could cordon something off to say, okay, this is going to be the pedestrian plaza.
Yeah.
And then put a four way stop down there and do a pilot and check it out.
Jersey barriers.
Yeah. Yeah, because that's, you know, like, you do a major change like that and people don't like it or don't accept it or, you know, thing. And then, you know, there's no going back. I mean, anytime soon. So if you can do a pilot, if it's feasible to do a pilot.
It might be there.
You know, you, but you got to do them right. You know, you don't want to put, you know, you don't want it, you you want it to feel like it's actually going to be that way. So you do have to make it nice and not just put a, you know, like a stop sign in a five gallon bucket.
Marking up like that, yeah.
Portsmouth's done a lot of that.
Yeah, they have been doing it.
They've been doing a really good job with that, yeah.
Yeah.
And sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. Like, sometimes they do it and they're like, oh, people hate this, or this is a terrible idea.
They're going to lay in the middle of the road.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. That's, that's what, I think they did that. So, so no, good stuff. If you get a chance, get, definitely get on there, look at their recommendations. And they'll, they'll have a formal report coming out. We'll be going to the select board in January. So I'll keep you posted on that. Or January, February, at the end of January, beginning of February. Because we were kind of looking if they were going to propose something that we could get on this warrant. But their recommendations are such that they're so, they're complex. They don't just say, oh, okay, you know, recommend the A, you know, something. And they're all tied together. So it's not going to be a very simple or nothing to do quickly. It's something to really develop, get public input on and so forth. So we decided, let's not, you know, we're not trying to go for anything for March 24 here, based on these recommendations. We'll just absorb them and work through them for a later date.
Yeah, the, one thing I've always thought of is like, so in, I think it was 2016, we redid all the sidewalks downtown. And there were like bump outs at it and some street trees and some new stormwater stuff. And it was always really disappointing, like, why didn't we look at the traffic circulation? Or did we look at the traffic circulation? And this is what we came up with? Like, because I was like, it's just, I feel like a study like this should have been done in 2014. And then it all could have, you know, that
So the idea was, when that happened, we had to make it one way. And we were hoping people would get used to it and try to change traffic pattern. And there were too many complaints. And we just put it back after the construction of the sidewalks.
Oh, so it turned into one way and then it was taken back?
Yeah.
I don't remember that.
It was like a figure eight, I think, wasn't it?
You came down Portsmouth Ave and you went Chestnut, down that way.
Okay.
Cross String Bridge.
Yeah, Cross String Bridge, and then up and around.
Oh, that whole big thing was
Did a loop.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. I can see how that would be.
All I could think of is they didn't put nice streetlights in.
Yeah, no.
That was an opportunity.
Yeah.
Expensive, but.
Yeah, I just remember, because I moved here in 20, in late 2015, and the, the bandstand is, when you, when you first are coming to town, if you don't know where you're going, it is, and there's so much to look at because it's beautiful. Like, downtown is beautiful, especially this time of year, and you're like, but the traffic pattern is so bizarre. And like, I'm just surprised that people don't
And what do we have, six, we have six
It's really nutty.
Roots that intersect there. That's another problem, right? So with the trucks and things like that, and the traffic isn't just us.
Coming through town, yeah.
They're rooted through downtown.
Yeah, I think it's so confusing that people don't travel faster there because like
Yeah, it's actually a good thing.
You know, like, the people that know it are caught, they know, they know it. And then people that don't know it are going like slow because it's like, like you said, there's everything to look at. So if there are crashes, they tend to be thunderbenders and not serious injuries or fatalities.
Luckily, no. Yeah, luckily not.
There's huge trucks going down through there. I mean, you know, there's not space for much down by St. Ace. I mean, yeah, and, and out by Ioka, where it's narrow. And these guys come in with those long flat beds. I don't know how they do it.
They talked about it at the last public meeting.
They did recommend potentially looking at truck routes and possibly redirecting them, like the through trucking and don't allow it through town.
Yeah.
And redirect them to up to Newfields or wherever. You know, you got to figure out a direction. So because all the GIS maps these days and so forth have like truck routes and so forth. So the technology's there for these truckers to know what to avoid and what not to avoid. Because you never knew, you know, it was only signs before. Now, now with the, you know, the internet and so forth and GPS and all that, it's much easier. But they recommended looking into that. And then like allowing delivery trucks maybe at certain times of the day. Like, okay, by 10 a.m., you know, or 12
And the manufactured home coming through.
Yeah.
How they swing the corner.
Yeah, unless you have to go through it, you know, kind of keep, keep trucks away from them.
Yeah.
Unless it's a delivery.
Well, but the lead vehicle made a wide swing by the bridge and then kind of came right down the middle of the road. I saw him coming anyway, so I made him pretty spaced. But, you know, they, they knew how to do it, but that, you know.
Scary.
They have to have cooperation from the other way, right?
So, yeah, thank you very much. And we'll see you on January 11th. That's
David?
Good.
Yo.
Yes.
Happy New Year to everybody.
Hold on. Pete has a question.
Oops, one minute.
I'm, David, did I understand you to say that there was nothing major coming on the 25th? With the, the one, the end of January?
What do you mean, major? Like?
Well, I mean, a, a, we have nothing on the, nothing in your works for the 25th of January?
No, nothing development wise that I'm seeing applications that are going to be on the 25th. We are going to have a public hearing on January 11th and a public hearing on January 25th for the same thing. Two public hearings recommending, because that's what you usually do. Two public hearings on the zoning amendments, one on the 11th, one on January 25th.
What I, what I was asking was, is there more coming on the 25th?
That I, you know, that
Is that?
I don't, I don't
Is there, is there another application or another series of applications on the 25th that we'll be considering?
Not that I'm aware of. The only one that I know just came in that might end up on the 25th, or even the 11th, would be the 81 Front Street that we just talked about.
Right, okay.
I mean, not talked about the application. We just talked about that it was coming.
Yeah. Right. So the, okay, so there are no lot line adjustments or anything like that coming in?
Well, not
That you're aware of now?
That I'm aware of now, no. But if they do, we'll deal with them. I mean, if one does come in, a lot line adjustment comes in, you know, early next week, I'd probably put it on the 25th.
Okay, well, all right. So when, when is the drop dead date for something getting on the, on the 25th?
It depends on what it is. If it's a large development, it already happened. It would already be in queue. If it's a lot line adjustment that doesn't need a public hearing, that would probably be it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any master plan discussion tonight?
I don't think we kind of had it with the zoning amounts. I think it's all to
Skip land use regulations, performance guarantees, get
Yeah, we released, who did we release? Oh, shoot. Oh, we finally released KDA Lane, the 68 unit development, KDA Lane, the on, next to the rec park
Yeah.
At the corner of Holland Way and Hampton Road.
Yes, yes.
And DTC lawyers is there. We had held like $75,000 forever because they didn't perform a few things on the site plan that they said they were going to perform. They had a sidewalk, they had a gazebo, they had some trails, some arbor, you know, trellises and so forth. They had a connection to the park. And, and they kept asking, I said, you know, you need to, you know, you need to do these things. And but then, by that time, the condo association took it over.
Okay.
And I said, I told the developer, if the condo association is okay with it, if the owners collectively don't want these improvements, and then they, then, okay. But it's kind of them now, because that was what's on the approved plan. And then they got together and they voted, they, the condo association met with me, wrote me a letter saying, you know, we don't want that stuff because we don't want to maintain it. We don't, you know.
Yeah.
We don't want those improvements. So we released the funds.
Oh, good. Got that one tracked down.
Yeah.
Announcements? None, I don't think.
No.
Well, I'd be entertaining a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Second.
Food and seconded, those in favor say aye.
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 We stand adjourned. Thank you again.
Happy New Year.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports,